Recording.
Thank you so much, son. Of course, there's a massive truck going out in front of my house right now. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May 11th, 2021 Governance and Education Committee meeting. We are now in order. I'm Lauren Agonzales, Chair of the Committee. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Juarez. Masqueta, present. Strauss.
Present.
Chair Gonzalez.
Here.
Three present, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I do want to make a note for the record that I received a note from Councilmember Sawant that she is unable to attend today, so she, consistent with the rules, will be excused from today's committee meeting. Approval of the agenda. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted.
Oh, sorry.
There we go. Councilmember Juarez is here.
Yes, thank you. I was locked out. I'm sorry. I was screaming, "I'm here, I'm here." Okay, I got it. Thank you. Sorry.
I hate that part when you're just sort of sitting in the waiting room. Yeah. Does anybody see me?
Exactly. Thank you.
Well, we will have the record reflect that you have joined us just in time. Thanks for being here. We are gonna look at the public comment sheet here. I'm not gonna subject everybody through the script if we don't have anybody actually signed up for public comment. And I do not see anybody signed up on the public comment sheet, and so I'm just looking to IT to confirm that there isn't anybody in the queue that I cannot see.
There are no public comment registrants.
Great. So we will, we will close out public comment, given that there is nobody in the waiting room to give us public comment, and begin on, on other items of business on our agenda. So first up is item one. Will the clerk please read item one into the record?
Agenda item number one, Council Bill 120066, an ordinance relating to city employment, commonly referred to as the first quarter 2021 employment ordinance returning positions to the civil service system, adjusting the pay zone structures for 2021 for titles in the city's discretionary pay programs, and amending section 4.13.010 of the Seattle Municipal Code for briefing discussion and possible vote.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I am gonna go ahead and introduce this legislation real briefly before we hear from Council Central staff and other presenters. This is routine legislation before us today to address some personnel actions that require legislative action. And so I am excited to host members of the Seattle Department of Human Resources with us this morning, and our own Council Central Staff Policy Analyst, Karina Bull, to discuss this particular item. So I am gonna ask for folks to introduce themselves for the record, starting with Karina. And then if you could just popcorn it amongst each other, that would be wonderful. So Karina, can you start off with introducing yourself for the record?
Hi, I am Karina Bull, and I'm with Council Central Staff.
I'm Sarah Butler, Policy and Legislation Advisor to the Seattle Department of Human Resources.
Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Gardner. I'm the Compensation Program Manager under Seattle Department of Human Resources.
Elena Goodman, Supervisor with the Compensation Classification Unit with the Seattle Department of Human Resources.
Great. Thanks so much. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for introducing yourselves for the record. Karina, I'm gonna hand it over to you to give us a little introduction, and then we'll hear from the department.
Thank you. Well, this legislation, which is known as the First Quarter Employment Ordinance, is legislation that the Seattle Department of Human Resources transmits up to four times a year, and it takes care of or implements personnel actions that require legislation to happen. So examples of those kinds of personnel actions can include civil service classification, adjusting pay bands, and reclassification. This particular legislation does a little bit of all of those things. It would return six positions to the civil service system in a number of departments, the Community Police Commission, SDHR, Human Services, Public Utilities, and Municipal Courts. It would also adjust the pay bands of three job titles in the Legislative Department. It would reclassify two exempted positions. So for those positions, they current, one of them, for example, was currently titled an executive assistant, and it would be reclassified to executive assistant senior. And a quick word about civil service, in case folks are not familiar with that. It is a classification that is basically the default classification for city employees that provides a range of job protections. It requires merit-based hiring, so it's not just appointment. And employees who were civil service-covered have a probationary period of employment where they can be fired for any reason. But after that probationary period, which I think is usually a year, they can only be fired for cause. There has to be a rule that they have broken in order to be terminated, and there also would need to be progressive discipline before termination happened. So the only positions or job titles that are exempt from civil service include those that are declared in the charter, and those would include positions like boards and commission staff, elected officials, city attorneys, and some others as well. There also is an ordinance, Seattle Municipal Code 4.13, that lists a number of other job classifications and positions that are exempt, such as temporary workers and library employees, and then a whole range of other positions as well. And typically, the SDHR director would, has the, or has the power to, or the authority to recommend when certain positions should be made civil service exempt or covered by civil service if not already, if that's not already determined by the charter or by the ordinance. So that is a brief introduction, and then we have some subject matter experts at the table as well.
Great. Thank you so much, Karina. Really appreciate it. Sarah, Lisa, or Elena, anything to add?
I just have one clarification on the third item here. It's, the action here isn't reclassifying. It's just updating the record, the table, and the Seattle Municipal Code to reflect the new job title. Otherwise, I think Karina did a great job of summarizing this legislation.
All right. Anything else from our HR folks? All right, I'm seeing, I'm seeing heads saying no. I have a, just a few questions, just to make sure we get this information on the record. Just generally, for the folks over at SDHR, how do you, how do you, you know, how does the department determine how to restore civil service protections to a position if that, if that were to occur?
Yes, Sarah, I'll go ahead and take it. Good afternoon, everyone. The, the unit staff, the Classification Compensation Unit staff, receive requests from the various departments to review positions. And as a part of that, we also review their civil service exempt status, when positions are exempt or not exempt, and they're being requested to be exempt. And we look at the criteria that are defined in the municipal code and in the personnel rules. We do a thorough job analysis to determine if, to the, to determine the appropriate allocation, whether they meet the criteria for civil service exemption based on the standards that are outlined, or they don't. And so it goes both ways. When positions change significantly, where they no longer meet that threshold to maintain the civil service exemption based on the municipal code identified criteria, then we bring them forward as a return to civil service.
Got it. Okay. I had a few other questions for you, but you answered them in the context of answering that one big general question, so now I don't have to ask you the additional three questions that I had listed on my, on my script here. So thanks for doing that. Colleagues, any comments or questions on the bill? And just to confirm with the HR folks, this won't, this won't result in anybody, any sort of layoffs or furloughs or job loss. This is just a technical fix to classifications.
That's correct. There are no negative impacts in any of this legislation.
Okay, colleagues, any questions or comments? Right, hearing none, I will move that the committee recommend passage of Council Bill 120066. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend passage of the bill. Are there any final comments?
Sure.
Go ahead, Councilmember Strauss, please.
Council President, I understand, having worked for Councilmember Bagshaw, the previous Chair of this body of work, that this can seem very rote or maybe not exciting legislation. And I just want to highlight that it is incredibly important legislation for keeping our bookkeeping accurate and up to date, and just want to thank everyone at SDHR for doing the important work that you do. And thank you all for being here. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. All right, any other final comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the committee recommendation that Council Bill, sorry, Council Bill, I just lost the number of the Council Bill, 120066, be passed and forwarded to the full City Council?
Juarez.
Aye.
Masqueta.
Aye.
Strauss.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Aye.
That's four in favor, none opposed.
Thank you so much. The motion carries, and the committee recommendation is that the Council Bill be passed and will be considered at our May 17th City Council meeting. Thanks so much, Karina, and folks over at SDHR for joining us for this fairly routine legislation. Appreciate your patience and appreciate you being here with us. So you are welcome to, of course, exit the meeting and go do other important work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please read item two into the record?
Agenda item number two, Childcare Access: Challenges and Strategies for Home-Based and Center-Based Childcare Facilities for Briefing and Discussion.
Thank you so much, V. Really appreciate it. Colleagues, I am really excited to have this panel here with us today. This panel is for us to do a deep dive into childcare facilities, both home-based and center-based care in the city of Seattle. Childcare is an important issue to many people in the city of Seattle, myself included. And over the course of the pandemic, we've learned just how crucial access to childcare is for everyone in our city. Childcare is infrastructure, and yet finding childcare is incredibly challenging. My own experience of searching for childcare meant visiting a lot of providers, and, and sadly, very few culturally, linguistically appropriate childcare options were available in my own neighborhood here in West Seattle. I know this experience is not unique, but it is one shared by thousands of people and families in our city. And as vaccine efforts are underway, my office is hearing more and more about the need for childcare for constituents to be able to return to work. It is my hope that part of our recovery can and will focus on prioritizing the increase, the much-needed increase of access to affordable childcare throughout our city. For the rest of today's committee, we are, again, gonna dive into some of these challenges with childcare facilities and, and childcare issues in general. And we're also hopefully gonna identify some opportunities and strategies that might be helpful now for some investment in action by the Seattle City Council. So with that, for this discussion, we will hear first from a community-based, we'll hear first from community-based providers and advocates in our community panel to share their firsthand challenges with childcare facilities. And then after that, we will ask DIL, SDCI, and our Human Services Department to share what the city currently does to support childcare facilities, infrastructure throughout our city. So I am gonna close my remarks out there, hand it over to the panelists, and we'll start with, we'll start with introductions from our panelists. And why don't we start with Casey, and then we can head down, head down the line?
Hi, thank you, Councilmember. My name is Casey Thorin, and I'm from Hagard Childcare Resources. We've been running monastery programs in Seattle for about 40 years, and we currently have eight schools with about 600 families. And unfortunately, about 1,200 families are on the waiting list, so I know those challenges. Thank you for letting me be here.
Yeah, thanks, Casey, for being here and for that introduction. Let's hear next from Nicole.
Hi, my name is Nicole Traore. I am an EHS Early Head Start Lead for Childcare Resources. Prior to that, I was a coach lead and did coaching for about four years, supporting about 180 providers across King and Pierce Counties, both family childcare and childcare centers. And thank you for having me here.
Thanks for accepting our invitation, Nicole. Really good to see you and have you here as a guest. Next up is Kathy Green.
Hi, my name is Kathy Green. I'm a member of SEIU 925, and I'm also a family home childcare provider.
Thanks for being with us, Kathy. Really appreciate it. Okay, so who wants to start on the community panel here?
I'd be happy to start.
Great. Thanks, Casey. Get away.
And I don't have recommendations for you, but I do have our recent project that we're working on. I hope that it really, it can highlight some of the challenges really that are specific to Seattle, and, and maybe kind of just share that information for you to explore further. But like I said, we, we have been running monastery programs in, in Seattle for really over 40 years. And this past summer, we've been, we were notified that our Seattle Children's Monastery Program, which we've been running for 18 years, that with their budgetary concerns, they were choosing to close it this summer. So leaving 85 families that are all healthcare providers without childcare in the middle of a pandemic. And so we really rallied together with our family community and have decided to take this and relocate it as an independent organization. And so we have a new facility, we have architects, we have our contractors, and we are currently kind of wrestling through the challenges of the city process. And so I have this as point number three, but like really, this, the primary driver of our challenges that are directly tied to city of Seattle processes are this definition of substantial alteration. And a substantial alteration, you know, with SDCI could be if you have, if you're, have 50% of your building is destroyed and you're rebuilding it, or if the cost of your renovations are more than the total value of the building. In our case, it's only being triggered because we're increasing the hazard level of our occupancy. So we're going from an office building to a childcare center. And, and really what this means with a substantial alteration is that we need to bring everything in that building up to current code, and we have to do a full design review. And so in, in both cases, this really is driving some really, really substantial increases in the time and the cost of this project. And, and when we look at across, like, trying to expand childcare in Seattle, everyone is facing that same, that same limiting factor. And so in our case, what we initially anticipated being about an $800,000 renovation of a building, which could really be done through normal tenant improvements of adding toilets and adding sinks and classroom, you know, walls for classroom dividers, has turned into an over $2 million project. And when we think about expansion, that, that is adding, we're adding 104 childcare spaces, but at a cost of $20,000 per licensed spot. And, and I think like by all measures, when you look at this, this is, this is a terrible business decision. And over the 15 years of our lease, we will never recoup this investment. And so fortunately, like, we are educators first and business operators second. If we were not, like, we would not be doing this. And so then adding to the cost of buying and building in the timeline is, is working through SDCI. And like, I understand that SDCI is overwhelmed with demand, and COVID has really presented some challenges with their own remote work. It's just, it's been a very frustrating experience. And so throughout this process, we've secured first available dates with SDSBI for pre-submitting meetings and for plan review meetings, but that has been a total of six months of waiting. And then once we get our plans in to do a full design review driven by the substantial alteration definition, that's another 16 weeks. And so in total, we're waiting 10 months, 10 full months of paying rent during this time, of sitting and waiting to be able to create childcare. And that's really hard. And for small businesses like ours, or small, even smaller businesses like Kathy's, this is not something that, that we can do. The prospect of opening a new school is really daunting and in many ways completely infeasible. And then with the additional challenges of working through substantial alteration, it's nearly impossible. So I know this is brief. I hope this helps illustrate some of the barriers that the council could, could help address and create a path forward to facilitating rather than hindering the expansion of childcare capacity. But I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Casey. Really astounding numbers and timelines here. So I'll be looking forward to hearing from SDCI sort of their, their thoughts on some of these, some of these timelines and, and related costs. We'll be looking forward to hearing some, some reaction from them as well. Colleagues, any questions for Casey? Or comments? Sorry. Councilmember Masqueta, please.
Thanks so much. I'll save some of my broader comments and questions for after the panelists, but just wanted to double check, Casey. Thanks for the summary on this page here. Is there any of these delays and costs that are not city-specific, or is this all city-specific timelines?
Councilmember, so, so when we, we first got to the point where we, a lease was feasible on this location, the very first meeting we could get with SDCI to really determine feasibility, it took 56 days. That was the first available meeting. We were, we could have done it the next day. And then, once we were able to determine that this was feasible and that we would be able to put a childcare center in this location for both land use and building code, 126 days was the very first plan intake meeting available. And so we reached out to Director Torrelson, we reached out to a number of councilmembers who assisted, and we, we got a response from SDCI. They said that they would, they would try to, to get our plans in earlier for review if available, but they couldn't guarantee anything. So I feel a little frustrated to just maybe sit, and in my, in my mind and imagination, I'm sitting behind a bunch of multifamily developers, waiting, and we're at the very end of this very long queue, and there's no way to prioritize human service organizations, or there's no priority process available to get this done any quicker.
And so the, so the, so Casey, the, the costs that we're seeing on, on this slide, I guess what we're trying to figure out is, is sort of in terms of that delay that you're identifying, right? Sort of the, the city's processes creating, you know, a long runway in terms of feasibility and planning and, and breaking ground and getting going, right? So, so these, do these costs that we see here, are these costs that are specifically tied with that delay? Or are there costs included in this slide that would have been incurred regardless of the SDCI process?
Yeah, Councilmember, there, there really are, like, most of these costs are regardless of this delayed timeline. There are certainly some real costs associated with the delay, is that we're paying rent, we're paying $25,000 a month in rent throughout this process. And for childcare who makes kind of these low, single-digit profit margins, that has a huge, huge impact. There are a number of costs that are associated with this, these code upgrades. And we understand, like, it would not be intelligent to, like, say that we're gonna sacrifice any life safety code upgrades, right? Like, we need to, we need to upgrade childcare facilities to current code for any life safety issues, structural, the whole, like, gambit of things. There were some interesting costs associated with those code upgrades that we weren't really anticipating. Partially, this building that we are, that we are using was a 1975. And then in 2000, a structural analysis was done, and it was in compliance with kind of FEMA guidelines. But because of this substantial alteration and doing the full code review, they had to do a full structural analysis. And just to get a structural engineer to do that was $85,000. And then we're, you know, we're not doing significant work inside. We're putting sheer walls in. But, but just those pieces are another $200,000. The city wouldn't allow us to add a water main. And so we're having to do this kind of funky water connection to be able to support a sprinkler system, which it's $100,000 to put a sprinkler system in, another $100,000 to hook it up to the city water. So, so a lot of these costs, like, yes, we were going to have to incur them anyways. There were some unanticipated costs associated with the, the code upgrades. And, you know, we are, we're a little company. We don't have, you know, we're not developers. We, we, we don't have a team that does this, you know, with parents in the morning and then dealing with this in the afternoon. So going into it. But there are some real costs associated with those code upgrades and that, that long time period with SDCI.
Yeah, and we've been hearing a lot about just sort of the costs, the, the, the real costs associated with those mainline extensions is, is, is real. And we just sort of dealt with that issue in our Transportation and Utilities Committee in terms of lifting it up as an ongoing concern for a lot of, a lot of folks throughout the city. So appreciate, appreciate that. Everyone is equally impacted by that, by that reality. Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Casey, for presenting this. Your note about 56 days for the first available pre-sub meeting for feasibility, you said you were ready to go the next day and had to wait that two months. That is a topic of investigation that we are taking up in my Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee with SDCI in looking at how do we goal-set better? And how do we ensure that each of their permitting nodes has the staffing that they need to be able to quickly and effectively review and turn around permits? I don't know if this would have applied to you, but should you have had to go through a conditional use permit, that would have been another delay, more dollars. We've already addressed that through childcare near you removing that conditional use permit for childcare facilities. And I think that you bring up the good point that for issues of societal importance, such as permanent supportive housing and multifamily housing and childcare, we do need to find a pathway to ensure that there's timely approval of your permits while at the same time not pushing everyone else to the back of the line. So this is really helpful information. This actually helps me do my job better with SDCI, having this firsthand information on the record and in committee. So also thank you, Council President, for bringing this to, to committee today. And Casey, please do reach out to my office anytime you want to talk about permitting.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other questions for Casey, colleagues? All right. I have a feeling this is gonna be a bit of a theme, so I'm sure we're gonna hear a little bit of the same from Nicole and Kathy as well. So Nicole, I understand you're next in the queue. So Nicole, I understand you're next in the queue, so.
Wonderful, thank you so much. I probably don't need to start the conversation with the need for childcare. However, let me just touch upon that. You know, a productive parent is one that knows their child's safe, right? Content, happy, learning. And generally, a parent wants to be close to their child, have easy access. Just in case the child's sick, you want to be able to rush over and and be able to pick up your child. If you work in the city of Seattle, can you find childcare within the city limits? It is a challenge. There's a high probability that you can't. You might need to go to the outskirts of King County to find childcare. And this is why. Lots of challenges to opening up a family childcare center or a or a child care, family childcare or a childcare center without within the city limits. Lots of barriers, affordability being the number one. A family childcare would either purchase the home or rent a home, right? What would the income need to be to actually purchase a home within the city of Seattle? And can you actually purchase a home with an income to come type of thing? So generally, FCCs are are renters. And for centers as well, you have land space that's very expensive. And for a business that isn't established, it would be difficult to start. Casey highlighted, you know, they they have been in this business for a really long time. And they have some supports to start and and the difficult road that he is walking just to try to get a childcare center within the city limits. To these spaces, so a family childcare or a childcare center, a lot of times, there are changes or adaptations, modifications that have to be made. Licensing might come in. They might say that there needs to be another sink. If it's a family childcare, they might, they might say that there needs to be toileting in the vicinity. So maybe a remodel of a bathroom. Possibly a different wall, you know, a wall that needs to be taken down for visibility might require, you know, different fencing to make sure that the space is fully fenced, a discreet barrier between the parking and the school entrance. This city might come and impose different improvements as well. The walkways, the sidewalk, the parking, all of these modifications are expensive. And for a small business, an FCC or even a small center, $4,000, $5,000 expense could end their business string. This also happens sometimes to already established family childcares or centers when they're asked by the city or licensing to make a modification. Childcare is not a big for-profit business. Family childcares are really, you know, typically just trying to stay afloat, right? They're just, they just have enough money to to be able to make it from month to month. If they're hit with a modification, many times, they have to close because they don't have the means to pay. And generally, there's no other options. Also note, when when you're starting up the business, there's obviously lots of materials furniture and equipment that you have to purchase. So if you do have that little startup money and you're you're hit with a modification cost, you very well might not be able to go forward because that little bit of money that you had saved for materials, furniture, might be devoured by by that modification. It is also important to note that we do have a large East African community in our Seattle area within the city of Seattle. And many will not, because of religious beliefs, take out loans. So we are a city that has this beautiful infrastructure. We have busing, transportation, so many work and business opportunities. But the piece that's missing is childcares and children within our city. Noting too, that childcares bring bring job opportunities. And this is the right slide here, yes. This slide shows the number of family childcares and centers within the city of Seattle compared to the outlining King County area. Again, many families are forced to find childcare outside of the city limits because there's more choices and more slots available on the outskirts of the city. One just example is if you're, if you are working in Seattle, you find that you're pregnant, or you better get on that list to and start looking for infant care right away. Because many times, there's an eight- or nine-month waitlist before the ability to get in for infant care. What happens if I have a spot for my infant and I've been waiting on that waiting list for seven months? And then they have to close because of costs. Maybe a family childcare can't continue. Or again, a small center. Infant care is the most difficult to find. The ratios for infant care are smaller than for an older child. So where a teacher in a preschool room, it would be one teacher to 10. For an infant room, it's one to four. To staff the infant room, you're going to have higher costs, heightened securities or heightened safety measures, regulations. And there's just such a huge shortage of infant rooms and infant care within the city. To support small businesses, FCCs, family childcares and centers with modification or startup money, it would make a huge difference. And again, that that little bit might be the difference from I can open to I need to, I need to look somewhere else. You know, sites are literally $5,000 to $10,000 away from opening one time. Support would make a huge difference. And really, it supports the infrastructure of our city and brings our children to our communities to work. Was there any questions?
Colleagues, any questions or comments on this portion of the presentation?
And FCC is Family Childcare Center. You're looking at this slide.
Thank you. So if I'm reading this slide correctly, this is, this is from, are these 2020 numbers or or?
This, we just pulled this data, so this would be 2021.
Okay, wow. So within Seattle, there's a total of 629 family childcare and childcare centers in the city limits.
Correct.
And and how, and do you have a sense, does CCR have a sense of like, how many families are in need of of childcare as compared to the 629 FCCs and centers?
I don't have like waiting lists. These are numbers, although I know we we do at CCR. I just don't have them off the top of my, you know, the numbers. Our call center gets, you know, is bombarded with calls, wanting referrals for sites within the city, the city of Seattle.
And and of the 629 locations here, do you, do you have a sense of how many slots, like childcare slots that represents?
So I do know that about 18% of the enrollment is FCCs. FCCs typically are anywhere from four slots, so four children to 12 max. And the centers could be, that that varies.
Okay, okay.
I think that, yeah, the important note is that there are, you know, twice as many FCCs in the surrounding, surrounding the city as there is actually in the city and centers as well.
Yeah. And and that, and is it your sense that the reason that there's, I mean, because it is quite a big of a disparity, right? We're talking about 629 within the city of Seattle and 1,334 in King County, not including Seattle. Do you have a sense, and and this question is for for any of our community panelists, do you, do you have, do you all have a sense of of what explains that 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 delta, that discrepancy? Like, why, why is it, is it regulatory? Is it price? I mean, it's probably a bunch of things, but I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, from from your all's perspective of, you know, being in this, working in this space either as a provider or otherwise, sort of what may be leading to that, 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 that difference?
From from what I I know, providers in the city of Seattle, it's affordability. They can't, they can't afford it. There are high, you know, lots of modifications that tend to need to be made. And they they can't afford to make those. So it's it's easier, you know, for a family childcare to go maybe on the outskirts or a center to go on the outskirts of Seattle. Because there's, it's just easier. There's, there's less of that, less restrictions. It's easier to open. You're talking about having to pay rent but not being able to operate. You know, not many, not many sites can do that, or family childcares for sure. They they might have just a few-month window. They need to be up and running right away. Affordability and the barriers to getting a site started would be the big, the big things that I that I would see.
Yeah. Colleagues, any other questions for Nicole before we shift gears in here from Kathy? Looks like none. Well, thank you, Nicole, for that presentation. Obviously, not, not, not the best news. I mean, I can, I can say for myself, you know, personally, that it was a real struggle to find the kind, I mean, sort of the 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 kind and the quality of childcare that you need. I have a 16-month-old. And for me and my family, it was really important to to find a provider that could, that was, that was going to provide a bilingual immersion program in Spanish, in my case. And I think when you start digging into these numbers even more and sort of start looking at family preferences, not just in the, in the model, but but in sort of the, the sort of, you know, kind of early learning or care that's going to be provided, it becomes, these numbers become even more challenging. And, and you know, of course, for me, living in West Seattle, it became even more complicated with the fact that I can deal with, with, with the West Seattle Bridge and getting to where I need to go. But I, but I really appreciate your insight into into sort of the, the, the state overall of of what we're looking at, both in terms of challenges for childcare in Seattle and 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 beyond. So thank you for that. Okay, so next up is Kathy. Take it away. We're happy to sort of hear your perspective and looking forward to having, having you share your experiences in this space as a provider.
Well, I was listening, I believe it was Nicole, I was listening to Nicole. And I've been in this business since 1996. I started out with centers. And in '05, I opened up family home. And I've had a lot of experience in this field. But what I'm finding out, like with the city of Seattle, a lot of parents don't qualify because they don't live in the city of Seattle. A lot of families, you know, because of the cost of living to live in the city of Seattle, they have moved out to the, you know, out, you rent in, you're burying, you're can't, you know, places like that. So that's a lot of reasons why they can't be connected with the city of Seattle. Also, I was talking to some of my colleagues and I know there are a lot of, there's a few programs getting ready to open up. And if you've looked around the city of Seattle, they're doing a lot of construction with apartment complexes. And then at the bottom level, they're putting childcare. I know Tiny Tots is doing one like that over in Alphelo. And I have another colleague of mine, he's doing one on Rainier, Rainier Beach area. He's opened up a brand-new program, Birth to Five. And I was trying to get information from them, you know, what, what, you know, is the the needs that you all have, you know? Because I I know they're major projects. They, they've had to get funders to do these, to help them with these ventures that they're doing. And it's just, you know, it's the cost of that's going, that they have to put together. He gave me an example, he has to do electrical, he has to do some plumbing, he has to do just multiple things. That's his part. The funder's only going to do so much. And then I was talking to another colleague of mine, and she is checking into starting a, she wants to start a program from ground up. She wants to do an ECAT. But what she was telling me, a lot of the barriers and how competitive it is for the grants, you know, out there, you know, you, if you don't score a certain point here, then somebody could bounce you out and they get the grant and things like that. So there is a lot of barriers in trying to continue programs or even trying to start new ones. I know for myself, I had to put a bathroom in my childcare space because when I got licensed, the bathroom was up, up, up the stairway. And every time the kids have to go to bathroom, we'd all have to go up so we could stay in ratio to you. So I put one downstairs and that, that was quite costly. But I think the reason why a lot of things I was able to do is because my children are grown. And I, you know, I don't have a whole bunch of extra costs. And, you know, I'm not raising my own children no more. And so that's why I was able to do it. But so, so yeah, they're talking, a lot of, a lot of the people that are trying to keep their programs going or start new programs, you know, they're talking about just, you know, funding and things. A lot of funding is inaccessible and it's underfunded and so yeah. But I don't know, the pandemic really put a, it really put a whammy on us with childcare. A lot of people, especially family home, a lot of people are very scared in bringing children in their home. And and even, you know, and and adding on more staff, they're, they're concerned with that. So yeah, we, we've got, we've got our challenges, but in some situations, you know, we just have to to believe and go forward that everything's going to be all right, so.
Thank you, Kathy, so much for for sharing that perspective with us. I see that Councilmember Strauss has his hand up, so I'll, I'll, I'll hand it over to him to ask his questions or make a comment.
Thank you, Council President. And Nicole and Kathy, thank you both for your work. Same offer that I gave to Casey is goes for you as well. I know you're in good hands with Council President. She can move mountains for you. And if there's anything my office can do for you as well, please never hesitate to reach out. I just highlight from this conversation, it really illuminates for me that we have so many vacant storefronts in our city and especially in new construction. I think of a building on Crown Hill in my district that has had vacant storefronts since the building was constructed because the cost of tenant improvements and the cost of rent for any business has clearly been prohibitive from them entering into the those spaces and those leases. And for you, it's even more intensive because of the different requirements that are specifically required for childcare, whether it's pull-up, drop-off space, Kathy, the bathroom situation that you just discussed. These are real implications and we need to be doing as much as we can to support you. And so whatever it is, please let me know. Council President, this has been a very illuminating presentation and I really appreciate being present for it.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Moskata, please. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Muscati, please.
I'll just echo, uh, Councilmember Strauss, um, both for Kathy and Nicole, and thanks Casey for your initial, a response to the questions that I asked too. Really appreciate this panel. Thank Council President and her team for setting up this discussion today. Um, I know, like many of you, we've been in conversations with folks across the city during this pandemic and that includes small business owners as well as childcare providers as small businesses and, um, as, as Casey said, you know, even those who are running it as a business, recognizing there's not a lot of profit margin there, um, folks need childcare. Businesses need childcare. We need it in our city so that there's fewer workers who are worried about whether they're gonna get home in time for their childcare, um, providers to be able to leave on time. And we knew, we know from a business perspective, it's also more attractive to workers if there's childcare close by. This is, this is an economic stimulant, um, that we need to be looking at. And I really appreciate all of your comments today, the work of childcare providers, um, including nine-two-five and, um, the, uh, nonprofit and small business owners as childcare organizations. You all have really, um, I think underscored today the importance of us looking at every resource available, which we're doing right now with the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. We know that there was additional assistance provided at the state level. Uh, but that plus county and city dollars, this is, this is the most important thing for us to be investing in. And as you all have talked about, making sure that the infrastructure is there so that people have a place to work and kiddos have a place to go. And I'm gonna be looking forward to continuing to work with you all and look forward to the upcoming, um, you know, presentations from the departments as well about ways that we can reduce these administrative burdens, ways that we can address the, uh, need for more sites in terms of capital investments, but also to make sure that we're providing the investments in providers and the small business owners so that people stay in this career, want to come to this career as a profession. Um, and to make sure that we're leveraging, uh, stronger public-private partnerships. So I wanted to thank you for all of the solutions that you've already helped to identify. I think the solutions that you've put on the table today really reflect that this has to be paramount in our discussion as we think about recovery and reopening. And also recognize the incredible work folks in this industry have done. Um, while many people have been able to stay home and the consequence of having many, many childcare facilities shut down during this time on top of a compounding childcare desert to begin with, uh, means that we have to come back and with full force and recommit to ways to partner with all of you, recommit to partnering with DEAL and our childcare community to find solutions to get out of this, um, crisis in a more equitable way. So just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Muscati. I really appreciate that. Um, and, and you know, and I think it's, I think it's important for us when we think about, when we think about infrastructure in the city, we oftentimes just think about infrastructure in the context of bridges and roads and transportation. Um, as you know, sort of plumbing, but like things we all rely on and think of ordinarily as infrastructure, but but housing is part of our infrastructure. Childcare needs to be part of the definition of infrastructure. It's really important for us to make sure that we acknowledge, um, that it is important to support, um, the wages of our providers, the training of our providers, all, all of the, the, you know, sort of tuition costs for families, um, on that end. But, um, but I also think it's really important for us to acknowledge that, um, that, that all of the programs and services and professional development we, we fund through our dollars, um, is only as good as the ability to be able to provide those services in, um, in a care model that it, that it, that suits, um, the provider. And so I'm really excited about this conversation. I'm excited about the opportunity to, um, share more of this information with, uh, our other colleagues as we continue to consider how to prioritize, um, you know, one-time federal dollars for um, strategic uses to, to address the, the realities of the childcare needs and, and in the facilities context in particular. So thank you all for being with us and for giving us, um, the benefit of your wisdom and your ex- expertise in this area. Um, it, it, uh, it goes a long way towards, um, being able to craft um, good policy and, and to make, and, and to make, you know, tough budget investments. And of course, this is, this is an issue that impacts every family in every council district across the city. So it's, I, I know it's something that every council member really, um, really cares about. So really, um, appreciate moving with us and taking time out of your busy days and your busy work to, to, um, to, to be with us today. Anything else, colleagues, um, for the community panelists before we, um, shift over to department presentation? All right. Well, that does it. Uh, looks like no more questions or comments. Of course, you all are welcome to stay logged in and listen to the department presentation. You are not required to. I know you are busy, so if you need to log off and say goodbye, please feel free to do so. No pressure to stay. Um, and really, again, thank you so much for being with us. Stay here.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and switch gears now and hear from our, um, uh, department folks. So let's go ahead and queue up that presentation portion. V, is there a presentation there? There we go. All right. So we are joined by, uh, many amazing people in our, um, departments. And let's see, let's start with, I know we've got folks from DEAL and STCI, um, and also our Human Services Department, and of course, our very own, uh, Brian Goodnight from Council Central Staff. So, um, why don't we start with Brian, introductions? Um, so Brian, why don't you introduce yourself for the record and then I'll sort of head down, head, head down the line, line here.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Brian Goodnight, Council Central Staff.
Great. And then, uh, let's hear, let's hear introductions from the Department of Education and Early Learning. Director Chappell, you wanna introduce yourself first for the record?
Yes, I'll introduce myself, uh, uh, Council President, but, uh, we'll be presenting this one. The Cam is gonna be leading this one, but I'm Dwayne Chappell, proud director, Department of Education and Early Learning, and, and I'll, uh, introduce Cam or Cam. Let you introduce yourself.
Thanks, Dwayne. Um, Cameron Clark, uh, Senior Policy Advisor, Department of Education and Early Learning.
Welcome, welcome. And that, and I think that's all, that's everyone from DEAL. Oh, no, Monica is with us. Monica, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Monica Liangagira, Director of Early Learning for DEAL. Um, but as Dwayne said, Cam is taking on this panel all by his lungs himself.
You all are never too far away. Um, all right. So I think that's everybody from DEAL as far as I can tell. So let's, uh, hear introductions from the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections. Why don't we start with, uh, with Bradley?
Good afternoon. My name is Bradley Wilburn. I am the Land Use Zoning Manager for STCI.
Welcome, Bradley. And then Gordon?
Uh, Gordon Clowers with STCI. I, um, participate in the land use code development, uh, side of STCI.
Welcome, Gordon. Thanks for being with us. All right, let's head over to Dan with our Seattle Human Services Department.
Uh, this is Dan, Community Facilities Man- Manager in Human Services Department.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for being with us. And, uh, last but not least, Ken.
Good afternoon. Ken Astron. I'm Senior Community Development Specialist with the Seattle Human Services Department. I'm the lead staff for the Community Facilities Program and the Childcare Bonus Program.
Wonderful. Thanks, Ken. Thanks for being with us. Really appreciate it. Okay, so, uh, I think Cameron, you are first up, so take it away.
Uh, great. Thank you. Okay, um, so I'm just gonna have a quick introductory slide, then I'll, I'll do an overview of, um, DEAL's engagement in childcare facilities. Uh, so I just wanna highlight this at the top, um, two thousand twenty-one, seen a number of new legislative proposals uh, that intersect with childcare access generally, uh, and facility development more specifically. Um, we'll cover this more in the next agenda item, uh, as, uh, our agenda item at DEAL. But for context on the facility side, uh, the American Jobs Plan actually is proposing twenty-five billion for childcare facilities. Obviously, that, that's a proposal right now, in the midst of negotiation. Um, I think excitingly, the state passed their budget, uh, in a total of fifty-five million dollars, which recapitalized, uh, into the Early Learning Facilities Capital Budget. Uh, we have some details on that we could share. And then, um, at the county level, uh, BSK Renewal actually has some capital funds proposed, uh, for not just childcare, but also for youth spaces. Uh, and there additionally is pretty exciting that the Puget Sound Taxpayers Account Funds, Pasta Funds are slated to open this year. And they'll have about five to seven million available annually, uh, over the next five years for childcare facilities. Just wanted to quickly, quickly highlight that there's a lot going on in this space, uh, from a funding perspective, uh, and we can keep moving, uh, to our, our DEAL portion. Thank you. Okay, so the Department of Education, Early Learning, uh, we began funding, uh, childcare facilities as part of the original Seattle Preschool Program Levy, uh, passed in two thousand fourteen. Uh, we continued that this program as part of the FEP Levy, uh, and continue to do so today. Uh, we invest the funds in three ways. Um, we're exclusively limited to investing to only preschool spaces and tie, and it's all tied to participation, uh, in the Seattle Preschool Program. So the, the first way we do it is an annual provider, uh, facilities fund. Uh, it's a competitive grant program, um, for our SPP and our SPP pathway providers. Where, um, providers are able to apply to either expand their spaces or improve their spaces, uh, and they can apply up to, uh, a million dollars. Uh, for, um, one-time funding, but we also have smaller grants available. We also, uh, this is something we started in the initial levy, have a pre-development services program. So we noted this is a really complex space for providers, not only to apply for funds, but also to evaluate spaces for feasibility, uh, understand the land code, understand the licensing. So we actually have developed a program where we have put a, a bunch of, um, a number of architects who have skills, uh, specifically in childcare development, uh, under contract with us, and we, and we lend them out to our providers who are exploring, uh, different facility projects. Uh, that's some, that's a, uh, program we had to pause last year, um, with COVID nineteen, but we're looking to restart that program. And then lastly, we also make investments, um, directly with development partners, uh, more specifically with Seattle Parks and Recreation. So we provide funds, uh, facility funds to, uh, Parks and Rec to, um, essentially, uh, develop licensed, uh, childcare spaces within community centers. There's over ten right now. Uh, and I think two more, uh, in line. And then they'll RFP those spaces out to our providers. We also have had, um, one experience with a low-income housing provider, uh, to redevelop Fire Station Thirty-nine, uh, with the Low Income Housing Institute, who then are similarly RFP'd it out, uh, ReWAS, another provider there. So that's our, our brief summary, and I'll, um, I'll share a few, uh, challenges and opportunities on the next slide. Great. So we note some limitations and challenges, uh, in this facility funding work. Um, at DEAL, we, we certainly value the full spectrum of childcare, uh, and it's limiting for us to only be able to fund pre-K, uh, which is what we're limited to by the, by the levy. Our, our preference really are projects, and we see more and more, uh, the need for projects that are truly either birth-to-five or have a birth-to-twelve focus. Um, another thing we'll note that, you know, providers, I thought this was underscored very well on the community panel. Uh, providers are not developers. It's not their core competency. Um, so it's challenging to support them to complete and navigate complex projects. I, I, I would paradox that to like nonprofit housing development, where there are organizations just there to develop nonprofit housing. We don't have a similar set of infrastructure, uh, for childcare providers. We really rely on them to the development themselves. Um, renovations, as we also saw on the previous panel, can be really costly, uh, and sometimes impossible in sites that are not initially designed, uh, for this use. So as providers go in to try and, to, to change the use of, of a commercial space, they run into a number of issues, and I thought that was underscored, obviously, uh, in our previous, uh, presentation. We saw, we see that a lot with our providers as well. And then lastly, and this is an equity issue for us, you know, bigger providers with more organizational infrastructure, uh, have advantages in accessing facility funds. That's something we've tried to mitigate with a pre-development program, uh, but it's a difficult balance and definitely a, a, a challenge that we, that we face. On the opportunity side, we, there are some exciting opportunities, and really, I, we see a window of opportunity, uh, to make a big impact in this area, uh, in the next several years. Uh, when we started our work at DEAL, uh, on this, you know, we were the only facility funding program along with the Childcare Bonus Program in the whole state. Um, now we have, the state has, has joined us, uh, the county is about to join us as well. So we have this, uh, melding of more sort of grant funding and investment into capital work, uh, that we think, you know, uh, has an opportunity to really make a, a big, uh, impact over the next several years. Secondly, uh, you know, we see an opportunity to really, um, as system leaders, find ways to both collaborate in line. Uh, funding processes, support the field in accessing funds. Um, everyone wants to get their funds out. But we also need to think about how we are supporting the field around infrastructure, pre-development, aligning our standards, and there, there's a lot of work to be done there and a lot of a great opportunity, uh, to, to strengthen that work. And so that's, I will conclude. I don't know if we wanna pass it over to HSD or stop for questions.
Um, why don't we take a quick little pause for questions? I'll sort of, uh, scan the room here and see if anybody has any questions. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this slide? Councilmember Muscati, please.
Thank you for pausing. Um, would it be possible to just ask a quick follow-up on Slide Five? Under challenges, um, wanted to, uh, maybe just double-check here. I might be looking at the wrong slide. Apologies. Uh, regarding the restrictions on DEAL, are, uh, the restrictions on DEAL are around levy fund dollars? Not anything inherent to DEAL? Is that, is that correct?
Correct. So facility funds we have that are part of our levy, they're in- intended to, to support the expansion of the Seattle Preschool Program. So we are obligated when we give them out that actually they need to provide service commitments back to the program. And the, we have to isolate those funds just for preschool and kind of associated spaces related to preschool. So that's, it's a levy restriction.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so it was important for us in the FEP Levy development, which was primarily focused, which was exclusively focused in terms of, um, those capital dollars on preschool, um, facilities. So there is, you, you know, resources is identified here for, um, addressing the need for preschool facilities, infrastructure. But unfortunately, it is limited to that, um, that SPP program in, in particular. Um, Cameron, can you, can you remind us when the SPP, I'm sorry, the FEP Levy is gonna be up for potential renewal and reconsideration?
I, I believe it's two thousand and, um, twenty-seven?
Goes through twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, I'm sorry.
All right. Great. Colleagues, any other, um, comments or questions on this portion of the presentation? We'll, we'll have an opportunity to spend a little bit more time with DEAL in the next, in the next presentation. Um, so no worries if, if there aren't any additional questions here. Okay. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So thanks, thanks, Cameron, for giving us just sort of a high, high, high level there. We're gonna shift over now to HSD.
Good afternoon. On a beautiful spring day. Um, I'm gonna give a, kind of a brief overview, similar to what Cam gave. Actually, we're gonna, fair amount of overlap in what we talk about, and then I'll talk a little bit about some challenges and opportunities. So I'm gonna try and move fairly swiftly, so there's time for questions. Uh, for those of you that aren't familiar, uh, the Community Facilities Program resides in the Human Services Department. It has traditionally been the city's response to dealing with capital needs for our social service providers. The program has the Community Facilities Program, and back in two thousand and four, the Childcare Bonus Program, which was also at that point, uh, signed to HSD, um, came and lived in, within the Community Facilities Program, since they're both capital funding. Um, and we're gonna really focus mostly on childcare bonus, but I wanted just to put that context of the larger umbrella. So, uh, the Childcare Bonus Program is fairly specific. It is in the land use code. It is a voluntary program. Developers can contribute to the bonus program. Uh, when it was revised around two thousand, it was tied with the, um, Housing Bonus Program. Developers who opted for additional floor area made one single dollar contribution to the city, which was split between the two departments. OH has revised, uh, part of their bonus, and now the childcare bonus sits, um, on its own. At a very high level, the re- program requires that, um, twenty percent of the kids served in a facility that is funded with childcare bonus dollars be, uh, low income, eighty percent of median or less. The provider and the land use, uh, landowner, excuse me, um, commit to a twenty-year obligation to provide those services. And the city does require a covenant to secure that performance on the land. Um, unlike the SPP program, childcare covers the full spectrum of infant care through pre-K. So we, we do reach the whole broad spectrum there. Uh, the program is very interdepartmental. Um, a large amount of what I do involves working with our partners, um, especially Office of Housing, where we've done a lot of work, particularly in light of the Home and Hope Initiative. Uh, we work a lot with STCI. Bradley and his staff work with us, both, um, early leads when projects are coming in, and also for developers who choose to do a performance option in the program rather than to contribute, where they build the childcare rather than contribute the dollars. Uh, we work very extensively. We work very extensively with Deal. We were very key in helping Deal get established when SPP was first passed. And we have a very tight working relationship with Cameron and his colleague. And we do a little bit of work with OPCD, not a lot, but we do, we do keep in touch with them when there's overlap. And then last and not least, of course, we work very extensively with the Law Department for all of our contracting. Without them, life would be very difficult. So just wanted to give a shout out to them. Program priorities. In addition to what I mentioned above, 20% low moderate income, 20-year requirement, licensed childcare. New spaces, I will make a note of that. The bonus program and the land use code requires that these be new spaces to expand our capacity. That is part of the requirement under the code and under the state. Typical things that we've kind of prioritized in looking at projects over the years. Alignment with Home and Hope has been a very big. Driver. We were actually, I think, the kind of the predecessor to the Home and Hope Initiative from enterprise partners. And the city is a partner in that mostly through the Office of Housing. We have traditionally focused on serving underserved communities, underserved providers, people who we, we have kind of worked with. Through HSD and Deal in the past, who have kind of followed along under kind of city policies and priorities. And another big principle is we've been looking at transit oriented developments, i.e. light rail stations. Out of the number of projects that we have, I would say, let's see. One, two, three, gonna be probably four or five of them are either located directly on or adjacent to a light rail station or within a block of a light rail station. We've been very fortunate on that, but that was a, that was a goal initially back then. TODs were, were very much. Kind of sought after when light rail was first opening and, but we've been very fortunate that with that and Home and Hope, we've been able to kind of provide that. Which gives families the chance to have access to childcare either on the way to work or on the way, on the way home. So that's been another priority. And I think in program accomplishments, um, to date, our first center that opened, opened in 2010 that we funded. We have 12 centers. Six are currently open. Two are under construction. Two are in negotiation and two have just been awarded. Funding letters. So we believe we have funding at this time left in the program for one more center, one more program. So we can talk a little bit about that in the challenges as we flip to the next screen. So thank you. Challenges. Well, childcare bonus program revenue is somewhat unpredictable since it is voluntary and it is tied to development. Mostly in downtown and South Lake Union and now with changes in the U District zoning. As development declines or as developers opt not to purchase additional floor area, revenue drops. So we have very little kind of predictable revenue. We, we rode through the development boom in the teens very well. It appears to be somewhat declining at this, at this point, and I can't say for certain where the next few years lies. But we've, we've been assuming that it is not going to resume to the level it had, although it's possible. Next, when really the restriction, I think has been already mostly addressed in the program, but that was something we took care of years ago. Again, by the nature of serving. New expanded slots, it does restrict us in some ways of where we can develop because of land. But that actually kind of ties into the next point, which is among the key that I wanted to kind of bring home as well, which is the cost of development. In doing a lot of these mixed-use centers, we are finding that costs are ranging from three to six million dollars. And some of the mixed-use low-income housing developments around transit-oriented development. Some of that is probably driven by prevailing wage requirements. Some of it is driven by land requirements in projects. Some of it is just driven by the market right now. So, but the point again being is that the cost of centers, I mean, even a rehab, and I think. The gentleman, I forget my, I can't remember his name, if he's still on, mentioned his site was a $2 million rehab and I, two to three million is not uncommon. Licensing requirements, space requirements, outdoor play requirements, all contribute to a fairly, fairly expensive. Project. And the challenge also is, and I think this is alluded to above as well, is that debt. You know, a lot of providers aren't able to take on debt. And even if they were able to take on debt, it seems to run counter to our idea of making childcare both affordable and paying living wages for staff. So the public investment is critical for a large expansion in the system. Last, I would say, and the challenges is that it's a long lead time. We need a long runway and opportunities come up. Particularly in mixed-use development projects, it could be three years from my initial conversation until a project is possibly even under construction or completed. And they're limited opportunities. If we are not able to commit early to a project. The opportunity goes away because the developer will repurpose the space because in order to close on all financing, all spaces have to be accounted for in all financing. So you can't really come in after the fact easily. And it's possible, but mostly unsuccessful. And we need to have money in hand to make those commitments. We can't actually kind of offer and, and, and work with agencies when we don't have funds to, to actually be able to commit. So there's a long runway, not unlike low-income housing. So it's just important to keep that in mind that, you know, from the, from the time we start till the time we finish. Three years is probably an average. It may be even a minimum. Let's see. Opportunities. That's the fun part. We have a pipeline of agencies. We share it with Deal and we share it with our providers in the state who I'll talk about in a little, little bit in, in the region. I would say right now, you know, we have as many as 15 who've inquired of those. I'm just going to mention a couple that are nearing the top of the list for probability. University of Washington is redeveloping their site by the Mount Baker Light Rail Station. We actually have a childcare provider that's in the Art Space Building right adjacent to that. It's a bilingual Vietnamese provider that's running under Sound Childcare Solutions, originally partnered with Vietnamese Friendship Association, who's now known as Kandalia. They're looking to do a, a large project at the North Gate TOD. I know, I believe Bridge Housing, I believe may have been selected and they are very excited about wanting to put in a center if they can get funding. And they've been actually in non-off discussions with us for a number of years about that. And third one I'll mention, just again, I have a longer list, but the Filipino community on the Rainier Valley. Looking to acquire an adjacent site specifically to do childcare as part of their Filipino community village development. So there are more behind them. We mostly do focus on center-based, given the nature of the funds and the complexity and the requirements. But we, we do have a list of people and there are other projects as well. Let me see, what else? Pre-development. I would say Cameron stole my thunder, but that's good. Great minds think alike. Pre-development is actually something that originated in the Community Facilities Program back in the seventies. The city partnered with Environmental Works to do a lot of pre-development and planning with nonprofit organizations. And it has proved to be some of the best investment money that we can do. It guarantees successful projects. And it helps those who are under, who, who are lacking in capacity. The ability to pause and figure out what is actually needed to be successful in completing a project. Because what people sometimes think and what's actually necessary when you get through the process aren't the same. So I have found from my work historically that pre-development is a very good investment. And it is a very good investment on working with agencies who have limited capacity. As Cameron said, not every agency has the ability to go out and hire people. Most of the agency directors are not developers by nature. So anything that we can do to enhance that capacity is a good thing. Last, I would say, just as Cameron also alluded to, system-wide collaboration. We've been, the program, as I said, the childcare bonus program has been active since around 2004, although in prior iterations, it goes back into the 1980s in the land use code. We've been one of the few funding sources over the years. It's been great to have Deal as a partner since SPP passed. We are now working with partners at the state, the county, our nonprofit and. CDFI partners like WCRA are now engaged. We're all looking to, we meet quarterly. We look to kind of see what we can do to smooth out the model. Eventually I think we'd like to see what we can do to make the application process easier. But the main thing is, is you know, there's just an expectation and a role that the city will be there. Because of representing both what's happening within our jurisdiction and as a funder and what we're learning. And what we can help to do to kind of build a larger network. And I think again, Cameron stole my other thunder, which is. I would say we are not unlike where the low-income housing community originally was, probably 30 some years ago when they were getting launched. I don't think the models are ever going to be quite as large because the needs are very different, but the need to develop that capacity and to build is there for the short term. And it will probably continue at some point in the longer term. I don't know if we'll eventually get over the hump and get enough centers out there to kind of meet the current demands. But for the foreseeable future, I think we have, we have enough work cut out for us. So with that, I'll stop so we can have time for questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Anyone else from HSD want to add anything?
Dan?
No, that's great Ken. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks.
Thanks so much. And then can the, the CCB? Fund, that's, that's specifically for, for center-based care?
Pretty much, yes, it is. I mean, if we were to get another source of funds, we certainly could work with Deal to look at doing, you know, home FCC or some hybrid models that are coming up here and there. But yeah, right now we are primarily limited that the 20-year requirement, the slots, the investment, the overhead, just the overhead, it, it really. It's difficult even for a lot of center-based providers. We've really focused on where we can be most successful and most, you know, have the most impact with this money. So.
Okay, great. And, and you mentioned that the, the CCB revenue is unpredictable. And I'm, you might have said this and I might have just missed it. What, what's the specific revenue source?
Developer mitigation contributions. So when a developer wants additional floor area, if they have the option of buying additional floor area by making a contribution. To the bonus program, among other options. And I think Bradley might be able to, or Gordon could talk a little bit more about some of those. But traditionally, when it was bundled with housing, we did pretty well. We've come uncoupled from housing a few years ago with changes in the code. I would say our appeal is. Well, it's just not as strong as it was. Let's just say that.
Okay. And did it become uncoupled in the context of the mandatory housing affordability?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I missed that. I wish I hadn't. Okay. Colleagues, any other questions or comments on? This particular portion of the presentation? Just scanning the, the Zoom room here as they say. Okay. I'm not seeing any hands raised on this portion. So, um, thanks Ken. Really, really appreciate it. And as well, thank you so much. So let's shift gears over to SDCI.
Hello, Gordon Clowers here. I'll talk about some of the progress we've made in the last year or so with land use code. Changes and then challenges and opportunities going forward. So we'll move to the first slide. So the childcare for all legislation passed last year is sponsored by Councilmember Strauss. And it was a really good effort to look at what are the impediments and barriers that we have. Toward permitting childcare use in the land use code and to remove them or reduce them as much as possible. And Councilmember Strauss alluded earlier to. One of the changes, which is to make childcare use permitted outright in more zones or most zones. Rather than being a conditional use permit. So the conditional use permit mandated an extra level of land use analysis. And a really close look at impacts of childcare on surroundings. Particularly in lower density zones like single-family zones or multifamily zones. So just by allowing the use to be permitted outright, it removes that land use decision from the mix. And in many cases, just leads to a simple building permit review. Secondly, we deleted a dispersion distance of 600 feet. Childcare uses are classified as institutions. And the code did have a kind of a strong protection against having too many institutions too close to one another. But we were able to take childcare out of that dispersion requirement in, in the lower density, single-family, multifamily zone. So that enables more, makes more homes, for instance, eligible to possibly host childcare use rather than being sort of artificially. Barred from having that use because of a proximity to another institution. Across several zones, including commercial and multifamily and Seattle Mc Zones. We removed childcare space from counting against floor area limits in the, in the zoning. Which means that that use can be added and built into a new building. Without having it consume the, the permitted space that, that can be built in that building. So. In an, in effect, you know, gives the, the best chance for childcare to be added to new buildings in the future. Without it being a, a burden on the, on the, what you can build into the building. Few other barriers were removed. A size limit on childcare in NC1 and NC2 zones. These tend to be zones that are closer and, and mixed into neighborhoods. More locally. And so there, there were, was a 10,000 and 25,000 square foot size limit on those, but we have removed that barrier. You, at the, at the more. Single-family residential lot level, we newly allowed for childcare use to be located within accessory structures. And we removed a student limit on home-based childcare of 12 students. So that was written into our code. Reflecting a state law limit. The state law limit remains, but if it is ever changed, then. We don't have this artificial limit on numbers of students that can be served in home-based childcare. So those, and there are a few other changes as well, but we, we. We can perhaps get into those in questions if you have, if you have them. Next slide. So going forward today, some of the challenges that we have may still relate to how the public may react to. A new childcare use that, that will go into particularly lower density neighborhoods. They still may be concerned about noise. From playing children next door or traffic. Pickup drop off from a childcare use if it's next door. Secondly, we still have minimum parking requirements in a number of residential zones for childcare. And that can certainly provide a. Be a, be a physical limitation if there's just limited places where a park, a parking spot can be put conveniently. And also I, I didn't mention before that. Well, we, we have removed also sort of a setback from, for the play area to an adjacent, single-family zone. So hopefully that helps the play areas be located in. More properties and, and accommodate the use, but that could still be an issue. And as I mentioned, the state law still has a 12-student limit on, on home-based childcare. So some of the opportunities going forward, you know, the, the legislation for childcare for all really has removed a lot of these barriers that, that were sort of written in. And, and true impediments to, to uses, these uses on many properties. Now those have been removed. And with the use permitted outright, we see an easier and faster city permitting path. And this should allow for. More childcare to be located closer within neighborhoods. More childcare to be located closer within neighborhoods to be more convenient, more accessible. More fitting in with people's daily. Needs and capabilities to drop off and pick up their children, et cetera, and accommodate different kinds of childcare. So pausing there for questions on those topics.
Colleagues, any questions or comments? Councilmember Strauss, please.
Thank you, Council President. Gordon, I just again have to thank you for all of your help with the childcare near you. We know that we need to have more childcare opportunities near where people live. Because I've heard so many times over that people are having to travel outside the city. Which is outside of their normal routine, adding traffic, adding pollution, adding time to their day. That is spent away from their families or from work. I am a product of a home based childcare facility that I believe had more than twelve other. More than twelve students in there. I'm sure the times have changed and, you know, it turned out all right. It seemed like the neighbors all. Were, were fine with it. So I guess understanding that state law would have to be changed for the twelve student limit. Are there additional legislative changes that we can take up about? Noise, traffic or parking requirements in residential zones?
I'm sure we could find a way to reduce some of the parking requirements, in particular Bradley.
Yeah, exactly. I was gonna say that biggest impediment is when we do a change of use. In the smaller, less dense zone, single family, multifamily, it's when they come into an existing building. And they want to convert it to a childcare center. And one of the primary obstacles is how do they accommodate parking? Which, and also loading areas. So that's the biggest impediment that I see for a lot of the smaller ones of family care centers. If we can go ahead and look at how we can go ahead and address the parking situation, then I think we're. We would be at advantage. I also want to point out, and I want to go ahead and, and just. Address the predevelopment service program. I think it provides me with an opportunity. If I have a way to direct these folks that are coming in for the smaller projects. And the, the smaller projects would be the family care centers. I just had a person I was talking to three weeks ago. That she was struggling and she was, you know, wanting to open up a daycare in the Seattle area. And I tried to explain to her the code and you know how complex, our code is not that complex, right? But I was trying to help her, you know, and, but it was a point that it became really challenging. And I wanted to direct her to somebody, an organization, and I didn't know. Of an organization to help her, to let her understand that process. And to guide her to become a successful business person in this particular area. So. I would love to team up with Ken and Dwayne's folks and just talk about this predevelopment service program and see how we can help out. And making certain that we provide a strong program where people, again, we can divert people to so they can get the necessary information. And also be referred to some of this, in doing this type of conversion, and we're just talking about conversions right now, it's challenging. And again, as was said earlier, if you're not sophisticated enough in going through the city systems, you're going to get lost. And I, for me, we're not helping if we can't address that crucial element of providing. Education so these folks can be more successful. I think the bigger projects that come under the. Category of childcare centers, for the most part, there are some really good players out there that have been in this game for a long time. And when we talk about the length of time to get a permit, it's built into this, the mixed use development. So it's just not the childcare center. We're talking about maybe eight story building or taller that they're providing a childcare center in there. So that's. Already built in that program. So that's not where the time lags are. It's a smaller project, but you guys, the city council has helped us. And taking away the ACU would add it a MUP process, which increased the time to turn these. These goals, these aspirations to provide, for, provide childcare in neighborhoods. So I want to thank you guys for. That work in the last year. It opened up a lot of doors for people, but now we just have to get them and help them to understand. How to go through a permitting process.
Bradley, I can't thank you enough. I, you kind of buried the lead there and I need to highlight and lift you up a little bit. You are providing, from what it sounded like just now, technical assistance to people who want to provide childcare. And that technical assistance is understanding our code. I'm the land use chair. And without Noah On, Lish Witzin, Kito Freeman and Ali Panucci, I would be totally lost and. And it's not because I was at a home based childcare program that had more than twelve students. You know, I, I, I'm steeped in this and I have to have technical assistance all the time. And so Bradley, I just have to thank you so much. It can be overlooked and not lifted up. And what you're doing is the critical work that so many people in our, our city need. You're, you're doing incredible work.
Thank you. But it's not enough. You know, for me, it's, excuse me, it's not enough. My hands are tied. I can only help folks get them to a certain point. But I need to have some place I can go ahead and place them to, and they can go ahead and have that kind of support that they need. So, thank you.
Yeah, Bradley, I think that's a really good point. And, and I think that this predevelopment. Issue is a very common thread. We heard it from the community panel. We've heard it from every single presentation. Right now, and SDCI is providing the, the exclamation point at the end of that. You know, theory of the case here is that, is that we're doing, we're doing important, necessary work to. Make it, make it easier to cite places or to convert places, but where we, where there is a significant gap is that technical assistance. To provide small business owners and providers that the know how, the skill sets they need to be able to enter into the market and navigate. Our bureaucracy, because that's what it is. And so, you know, we have a couple of different solutions there. We can set up, we can set up. You know, an, an interdepartmental team to, to work on this issue, to, to come back to us with some recommendations that would. Help us identify how to remove some of those bureaucratic challenges in the areas where we can remove those bureaucratic challenges. And then there are opportunities for us to figure out how to programmatically provide some support and resources. To you and others that might make it, you know, sort of easier to navigate the, the, the system and the, and the requirements that were, that. That are imposed and that we can't waive for whatever reason. So I'm hearing you loud, loud and clear and. And I think this is an, an exciting opportunity for, for collaboration. And, 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 and some good, good outcomes and results. So thanks, thanks for, for punctuating that need for us.
Also remember. Provider, by chance?
Yeah, go ahead, Casey.
Um, so, so we were really excited when this legislation was passed. And one thing to point out, like, this was, this covered land use. And so we were exploring this as an option for some of our, our Seattle Children's Families. What we ran into, which, which wasn't addressed, and maybe Councilmember Strauss, this is a great thing also to tackle, was, was the building code piece of it. And so to go to put a childcare center in an R three zoned location, well, you still have to have a building that has an E occupancy. So even for that, it triggers that substantial alteration that I brought up before. And, and we did a feasibility on, on a house that we could have put twenty children in and it would have cost six hundred thousand dollars. To turn that building into an E occupancy building. So like this legislation was great for land use, but it didn't solve the building code piece. So I just wanted to add that in this comment. Thank you.
Good point. Thanks for the clarification. Councilmember Musqueta, I see that your hand is raised.
Thank you very much, Council President. I, and thanks again to Casey for continuing to. Provide some real life experience here and the other panelists. I did want a chance to. Ask all of the departments if they might want to directly respond to some of the concerns that they heard in the previous panel. Including some of the wait times, costs and delays that were identified in the slides. And just while I have the mic, so I don't have to come off mute again. In addition to responding to the direct panel, I really appreciate what Council President and others have just underscored about the need for these connective tissues to be made and the collaboration. I mean, we have control over parking requirements and we have control over being able to set up. Programs so that people can navigate this system. And I would just ask if there's anything that we can do in an expedited fashion. Given the emergency of COVID, like we have done with restaurants and some of our other infrastructure across the city to the point made earlier, childcare is. Infrastructure and this is the great equalizer to help get folks back to work. So would love to see those strategies, especially around parking and. Helping people navigate the system be done in sort of an emergency nature as we respond to getting people back out. And the last question I have would be just to ask the departments, is there anything that we do to help track or support? Entities who. Do, do we do any transition or tracking or support to ensure that successful childcare providers have the opportunity to grow? So I know that there's some shared service models with businesses that have been discussed a lot. Have you seen an increased partnership? Or conversations from folks in the business community about how to support greater equity and access through childcare onsite?
Well, I can start on the delay and process questions. And I think Councilmember Strauss alluded to. Goals setting or priority setting and staff. I think that one of the things that. We would be sort of the, the way we set priorities on who comes into intake. Pre-sub meetings faster. And, you know, we, we do that for affordable housing projects, for green building projects and so on. And I think that's where we would need to look to, to try to reduce some of those initial wait times. Bradley, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Yes, I do. Again, it has to do with, I call them our frequent flyers, right? Folks that are, know our system and they're able to come in and go out in a relatively swift period of time. And this also includes childcare developers. So when we, when I'm looking at these numbers, the fifty six, took fifty six days for a pre-sub. For me, that's unacceptable. So I would have to look at that because sometimes you'll have these one offs. I mean, we deal with, you know, thousands of projects come into our department. And maybe it was technology with some software glitch or whatever. So I would need to investigate that. But these numbers seem kind of high to me just like looking at them. We do, once we have that pre-sub. We typically, we get a sense of what we have here and then we go ahead and try to sort it in a, in a way and get the right people on there. To help to expedite those reviews. But as Gordon said, we can go ahead and look at prioritizing these types of projects. But I think that, you know, for every one of these, you know, you're going to find another one that just sailed through the system. With regards to. Design review that I heard mentioned for substantial alteration, so long as the building has not changed, I mean, substantial alterations. Is internal to the building. And I might be speaking out of turn here, but like, and I've worked on a number of these. In ID, you know, all the way up north and it's typically is the skeleton and bones of a building that is a substantial alteration. They might, they might want to go ahead and. Put in some openings for windows or whatever, but that would not trigger a design review. So I'm intrigued on what happened. And, and again, we've, we're looking at design review only for multifamily zones and higher. In most cases, SEPA is not an issue right now. So there's nothing to speak, to seep about. If it's a change of use with an existing structure, because it's in the same category. Retail and institution is the same category, regardless if it's a thousand square feet or twenty four thousand square feet if they change the use. So SEPA would be out of, would not even be in the mix for change of use application.
I would only respond to Councilmember Musqueta. I think, first, I think all the community panel, what we heard, it really rings true. Of our experiences of working with providers based on working on facility projects. I'd say, just briefly, we did in our first levy have. An MOA with SDCI to provide status that was similar to affordable housing providers for going through the permitting. And we thought there was, we heard some good feedback on that. For allowing, this didn't make the process faster, but it allowed, I have to dig into some more details on that. And then just really briefly, because we've been talking about the twelve person limit for family childcare providers. In the recent legislation that's just passed, the state level, there is opportunity that they can look at to waive that limit. I'm going forward. So it's something we'll have to learn more about the ability, because now we can do that the city, but it looks like there may also be flexibility at the state, state licensing level to do that.
Great. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this presentation? All right. I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Well, thanks to all of you for being with us this afternoon. I know we went a little long, but I appreciate your patience. And lots of, lots of really rich information here for us to follow up with. So. Again, this is just sort of the, creating the foundation of, of this conversation and really look, really look forward to, to next steps and some. Some good follow up that I think is going to lead to some, some, some good results here. So thanks for being with us. Okay. So for those of you who are done with that agenda item, you're welcome to, to log off. We're going to move to our third agenda item and I'm going to ask the clerk to read that agenda item into the record.
Agenda item number three, strategies, strategies for expanding access to childcare, 2019 council budget actions for briefing and discussion.
Great. Thanks so much, V. Appreciate it. Okay, folks, so we are on the last agenda item. We're scheduled to talk about this for. About thirty minutes. So I apologize, we're going to go just a little over our four o'clock end time here, but. This is a important report out from a deal. So in the 2019 budget season, I. Sponsored several council budget actions for Deal to study a couple of things. One is how we can, as a city, expand access to infant and toddler care. And this is of course, is a, a sort of bridge to the, the SVP program. And then second, we asked Deal to examine childcare strategies and approaches. From a global perspective so that we can get a set of recommendations on how we can grow childcare opportunities in the city of Seattle. So Deal is here to provide us a report out on what they've learned and to share their recommendations. And I'm very excited about that. So. I will hand it over to Director Chappell.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President and all my other council member colleagues that are here this afternoon. If we can get the first slide up, I will kick us off. You, you know, the team, we just did introductions a brief moment ago, so I'll save those.
I think V will queue up the presentation in just a minute.
And as we're waiting, just wanted to thank you for having the panel on the presentations before us. I thought that was. Some really good information to hear and, and listening to folks speak. That, that was, I felt like that was perfect timing for what we're going to be ready to talk about now. As you mentioned, we're going to be talking about the, the council sponsored research and planning. That's related to a, a issue that's really critical and relevant to supporting our families here in Seattle today. And, you know, although this, this process was challenging. By the pandemic, really, you know, we actually believe it resulted in a rich set of recommendations and a strong. Roadmap on how we should approach expanding quality and affordable childcare options for families, particularly those families who have very young children. So in a few moments. We're going to provide an overview of the process. We'll talk about some key issues that unearth and a proposed path forward. So just know, please know that we're going to keep this presentation as brief as possible. So we can have some opportunity to field some questions. Next slide, please. Thank you. So what this is, this is the agenda for the presentation. As you know, this work took place in multiple stages and in similar structure, and should I say in similar structure to the memo. What we're going to do is we're going to briefly summarize like the slide list and then. We're going to conclude the presentation by providing a more in-depth overview of the current. uh childcare policy landscape, as you mentioned, um our values and outcomes that we lifted up in the work and our approach to implementing and considering future recommendations. Slide, the next slide, please. So what I will do really is uh you know, so a lot of the recommendations we're talking about will impact the C cap program. And in February, we shared a deep dive on C cap and our investments from prenatal to three to this committee. So with that in mind, what I'll do just briefly is just just recap uh a little bit of of that just to refresh everyone. So the the childcare assistant program was created in the early seventies as part of a a model cities federal funding initiative, which was really intended to eradicate poverty. At that time, childcare subsidies, they were paired with uh provider supports from um uh public health nurse, from public health nurse. And then from there, the uh program grew like it later grew with funding of support from the city's general fund to increase subsidies, expand uh health supports and and also included a quality component um of training in it, which provided professional development and technical assistance. And today, the C cap includes a little over uh two hundred providers with about sixty family childcare providers and a hundred and forty childcare centers. So between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty, uh C cap served an average of seven hundred and twenty five children a year. Currently, eighty four percent of the children that are utilizing the C cap subsidies are ages three to twelve. And of them, forty six percent of them um being preschool age and thirty eight percent of those um are uh school age children. And eighty four percent of our families identified as BIPOC with um forty two percent identifying as black or African American or or other African. And um so you know, historically, infants and toddlers have made up approximately ten to twenty percent of the C cap program since uh twenty ten. Um as you know, younger children are are typically more expensive to serve in C cap. And you know, the the Burke, the Burke Consulting uh group, they conducted an in-depth analysis of the C cap program back in twenty eighteen and they really outlined uh concentration of eligible families in the city and looked at our uh and the historical uh uh service patterns for the program. So with that brief just uh recap, what I'm going to do is kick this over to uh Monica, our early learning director, to kind of carry us out from here. And we can go to the next slide, please.
Great. Thanks, Dwayne. Um so as Council President Gonzalez mentioned, um you know, Deal received three requests from council as part of the twenty nineteen budget cycle, all related to childcare. So it's been a busy, busy year. Two, the two different CBAs will be reporting on out today. And then we also have a statement of legislative intent related to labor harmony, which is currently in its final stages and will be delivered to council later on um this year. Um and I wanted to just recognize that despite the COVID interruptions and a longer than expected process, all of the three projects have been incredibly informative and fruitful. And we thank you very much for the opportunity to dive deeply in these areas. So the two um related CBAs, um our next slide, please, um were uh the two CBAs that um uh that were, that Deal was given, um were um were interrelated. So we are reporting out on both of them together. Um they had a few distinct components, but what we did was we identified some core issues to focus on. The first one was access to infant and toddler care. Um we want to make sure that we're addressing barriers related to access, identifying specific strategies we can address through our C cap model and also identifying strategies that are outside of our C cap focus. Next slide, please. Originally, um we started the work in early twenty twenty, but it was quickly halted in March due to the pandemic. So we resumed our work in July of twenty twenty um by um developing the concept of our research and contracting with our research partners. Then in beginning in September twenty twenty, um we um that was the bulk of the work, where our our research partners, our consultants did all of the data collection and research and alignment. Um they concluded um their uh research in early twenty twenty one and which point Deal developed an internal work group and started um going through all of the reports and all of the recommendations um and starting to prioritize them um and and um and workshopping them um internally. Then um we started also um sharing and receiving feedback, which is where we are right now, um presenting it to you all and and then starts the, then then we get to start the fun work of actually doing some implementation. So we have at the end of the presentation, we'll talk about things that we're ready to implement in twenty twenty one and 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 considerations for um twenty twenty two and beyond. Next slide, please. So um we uh partnered with two main um consulting groups. One was Education Council and who worked closely with Start Early, both based in Washington DC. And um they are national um uh policy and advocacy organizations that do a lot of research um and have a very good um overview of national policy and um what 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 is going on across the country in terms of childcare and early learning. And they provided us three reports, one specifically for Seattle um with recommendations for a Seattle system of support for infants and toddlers. They um gave us some case studies of different jurisdictions across the country and also did a very thorough literature review. And then we also consulted with Dr. Sharon Knight, Culturally Responsive Education Services, based here in Seattle, who focused primarily on the community, community outreach for C cap of our providers, of parents, of families and um childcare providers in general. So all of this information was used to inform policies um uh that we and recommendations that we will be discussing. Slide, please. So as we talk more about the context for this, um for all of this, uh we've we, I think we've already have a good good background and context based um because of all the previous conversations today. But a lot of barriers were, of course, um uh identified through both of our, all of the reports. And um the CBA reports highlighted a series of of issues um that we need to really work to resolve if we're going to develop some sustainable set of support and systems to strengthen access and affordability. So the three buckets of um of barriers uh are around family barriers, provider barriers and system barriers. And I'm going to maybe highlight a few um that haven't spoken to. I'll skip all the facilities um discussion. I think we've um have had a good background on that. But obviously, um access um is not only um where are the childcare, um but also for families, it's it's challenging for them to, who have non-traditional work hours to find um access to childcare so um that that can meet their needs. The childcare costs are prohibitive for the average family. An average family pays more for infant care than they will for tuition at a public college. Um and so that's uh that's really one area that we're that we're looking um closely to. And um another panelist earlier talked about the need uh for families to uh move out of the ci- city limits. They may still work in the city, but they can't afford to live in the city anymore. And if they don't live in the city, then they're now no longer eligible for our C cap program. So that's a a big barrier. Um and then we also learned that um families actually don't know much about, don't know of C caps. So that's um something that we are going to um be addressing as well. Then from the provider um uh barriers, um obviously, you know, it's a it's a challenging business model to run childcare, especially for infants and toddlers. It's it's very difficult for Seattle service providers to sustain this. Provider report, they lose money serving infants and toddlers. It's a phenomenon found both locally and nationally. There's inequitable workforce compensation. Almost half of the state's childcare workers are on government assistance themselves and um caregivers and teachers with a bachelor's degree um are nearly half the average of other professions with bachelor's degrees. And then also, we understand that we are part of a very complicated childcare bureaucracy and it's complicated. It's a complex operating environment for for providers if they um receive funding from different sources. And that is also something that we are trying to address um with our with our plans. And finally, um systemic barriers. Um you know, again, there's like a lot, a lack of alignment and shared planning between city and local nonprofits, the county and state. And um just example of how a lot of the the facilities work is also siloed just within within our cities. So it's it's certainly um uh something that we can, we can improve on. And I think um today underscored um underscored that. Next slide, please. Um Cam already has given an overview of this um pretty, pretty um deeply in the previous um presentation, but I wanted to just really emphasize that we have taken this work um slowly and um and and want to make sure that our dishes decisions are really within the context of everything else that's going on right now in the country and locally. So we have three federal funding packages that include um childcare components. And uh the state, uh you know, um Cam mentioned that the Fair Start for Kids Act was just signed into into law and that has um significant funding um to deep uh to to deepen um working connection subsidies as well as many other po- um components. And we have the King County Best Starts for Kids um childcare that is being developed. And I also want to recognize that um back in twenty twenty, we uh were slated to expand C cap significantly and received additional funding for that. That was um that was stalled also because of COVID and and lack of demand. Um but we are prepared to um to to continue that in twenty twenty one and beyond. Um so I don't know if anybody, uh Dwayne, do you want to men- uh add anything to that?
I think you covered most of it. I I um I I would like to share that I am collaborating with my good colleague Leo Flor over at the county. Just to continue strengthening our partnership as well as seeing if there are any areas of alignment or other strategic ways that we can partner on behalf of our Seattle children and families. So I just wanted to share that uh with the group as well.
Great. So um we can go to the next slide and I'm going to pass it off to Cam. Um Cam is our uh lead uh policy advisor for early learning and really um spearheaded this this whole um this whole project. And so I'd love him to talk about the little deeply about the process um that he led the team through.
All right. Well, thank you, Monica and Dwayne. Uh so we'll now shift to the the final part of the presentation to review our approach to strengthen the city's focus on affordable access to childcare, uh specifically for families uh with young children. Uh next slide, please. So the reports are pretty big. They had lots of recommendations, lots of great ideas. I think a big challenge for us at Deal was to to start to prioritize and understand what was the best uh fit for Seattle and how we would approach that issue. So actually, one of the recommendations with ourselves was actually develop a policy um direction and some guiding values. So we did that uh before we started to really dig into the reports and that's on this slide right here. I would just kind of walk through them really briefly because they were, they were what we use as a lens to think through the recommendations. Uh the first one is we want to prioritize dismantling uh institutionally racist practices that are often associated with programs that serve low income families. And uh we want to acknowledge that C cap is no exception uh to that. There are policies that are overly punitive uh for families of color and providers that serve them. So we want to identify those and and work to dismantle those as much as we can. Secondly, we want to focus on it addressing issues that are unique for infant and toddler care. Uh oftentimes, infant toddler care gets uh lumped in with just childcare generally. We know there are unique issues, particularly economic issues, also service delivery issues for infants and toddlers. We want to center those and make sure that we're addressing those specifically. And then uh lastly, and we've talked a lot about this, we want to make sure we maintain our recommendations within the current policy landscape and that to really maximize the benefit for Seattle families. We understand what's happening at the state and federal and county level, and we're working and collaborating uh and building our our work off of that. Let's go to the next slide, please. You know, as Monica mentioned, uh those really, those got complex intersection of barriers. Uh one thing that we also wanted to do was to lift up what are outcomes we want to influence with these policy recommendations. And and the important part of that is that it's a, we want to address this problem holistically. We don't want to think about just like access and affordability for families and then also thinking about the provider side. So these are the five outcomes uh that we really want to focus on uh and really brief uh our recommendations and make sure that we have recommendations that address each of them. Uh the first one is how do we increase demand for C cap? So um families are eligible. We know some of them aren't participating. How can we increase uh our ability to make sure that they are participating and taking advantage of that benefit? Secondly, sustainability. We heard a lot today and even the previous presentation about business sustainability, child's care sector been under enormous pressure. It's very fragile and we need to also be thinking about what our policies are doing to encourage a more sustainable business model uh and also with some of the wage issues that have been discussed. Third, quality. Quality is always important for us at Deal. Uh we don't want families in in low quality childcare. So we want to make sure that we're working to ensure that, you know, when we give out subsidies to a quality program and that we are providing the supports that the 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 community needs, the provider community needs uh to make sure that we're we're maintaining quality, uh increasing quality. Lastly, systemic alignment. We've talked quite a bit about that, but it's on us, uh system actors to to be aligned systemically uh and uh and making better, better strengthening that that area. And then lastly, supply. And there's no way around it. We've talked about it earlier. Uh we need more infant and toddler slots, particularly we need more infant slots. What policies can we do to increase those slots? So those are the five outcomes that we we centered our recommendations around. I'll go to the next slide, please. So we're approaching this work in three phases. Uh the first is, uh we'll talk about this in a second. We have some immediate recommendations we we want to implement this summer, we intend to implement this summer that we, you know, we feel are fundamental changes that will strengthen our approach uh to our childcare work and also fit within our current budget structure, which still allows us to expand and do expansion next year. Uh for the second phase, we want to stay closely connected to um what's the impacts of Fair Start for Kids at the state level. BSK renewal, which is happening this August and has a over about thirty five million dollar childcare component annually. Um and we uh also uh want to keep our eye on the federal bills as well. So we really see the second phase is really doing a deep dive and what what are the impacts of those bills on Seattle families and how do we build from that? And then we want to move into a third phase, which is really uh that kind of second tranche of recommendations. So we have a lot of interesting things we want to try. We want to pilot, but we want to make sure that we're we're cautious. We understand what's happening in phase two uh and really sort of implement the right things uh in that second wave uh as we move forward. So that's how we're seeing this sort of roadmap over the next uh two to three years, was really strengthening our work uh around access and affordability uh for childcare. And that'll go to the next slide. Oh, and I'll turn it over to Monica to talk about uh our phase one and what we're doing summer. I think you're on mute, Monica.
Um so for this um implementation, uh to be uh, you know, soon, this summer, we want to start um with some really significant C cap modifications that we think will address issues um for families and for providers. So first thing is we want to expand family eligibility by expanding it to parents earning master's degrees um or who are actively searching for jobs and those unable to work due to disability. So those are changes to our um eligibility that I think will um will be beneficial to families. And I know Council President Gonzalez, you've been lobbying for um one of those at least um for a few years. So glad to to address that one. Um we also uh for providers and for families, we want to um make, just streamline and simplify our um our voucher system. We're making um modifications to how vouchers are issued, um how long they last, um and you know, redetermination processes and just simplify things um and reduce barriers um for families and providers. And finally, uh we want to also start expanding provider eligibility. Currently, C cap providers need to be within city limits and that is limiting for families um who may live on the border or who may work outside the city. And so we are going to start um partnering with um childcare providers who live in um right adjacent to city limits. So both um you know, White Center, Skyway, Sea Tech, um even Shoreline, uh areas where um where there is, where there has been demand in the past. So those are some quick um uh recommendations that we are putting into place um starting this summer, all of which can be absorbed in our, in our current budget and that we think will have positive um impacts for families and for providers as well. Um and then also this summer, if you can go to the next slide, we want to start thinking about the future. We want to start thinking about C cap maybe in a different, in a different light. Um and the first thing um that we are going to start work on very soon is developing a cost of care framework. I think one of the um the clear uh clear findings is that um infant care, infant and toddler care is very expensive and there is no program right now. And there is no program right now that is, that is properly supporting providers to offer this. And so our subsidy doesn't adequately compensate providers for, for that true cost of care. And so the only way to do that is to develop a cost of care framework, a real one, to understand what it takes for providers to provide high-quality care for infants and toddlers and for, for all children. So we see this as a foundational step in really thinking about our future, a future subsidy program. So we are starting with this process very soon and are excited, will be excited to, to report back on that. And then as we have mentioned already, we're going to continue to monitor the policy landscape because we don't want to duplicate. We want to complement and we want to fill in any gaps that may remain after federal and state and county policies take place. So that is sort of the, the, the holding pattern that we're going to have as we develop our cost of care framework, as we implement the, the CCAP modifications, which I mentioned on the first slide, and see, and see the impact of, of all of those as we prepare for possible future considerations. So Cam's going to close out our, our presentation by talking about, you know, a small subsection of lots of other possibilities that we can entertain in, in for the next year. So Cam, take it away.
Yep, we just moved to the next slide. Good, thank you. So this table on the, on the slide highlights things we want to consider beyond 2021. And a lot of this comes from consultant reports. Just to quickly orient you, it's organized, excuse me, by outcome on the left-hand side, so outcomes we want to contribute to and, and different policy options we're looking at on the right-hand column. I just want to quickly flag that the submitted reports, I hope that everyone has a chance to read through them, contain a really, a great range of ideas that Deal considered. Several, you know, such as implementing tax credits for businesses, really, we felt, felt, you know, outside our areas of expertise at Deal, but we didn't think it was necessarily a bad idea. And others, you know, such as there's a case study on childcare savings accounts, looking at the baby bonds program in Oakland, which is really fascinating. And we were really excited to read it. We did feel like that, that felt a little bit outside of this direct request. It's not that we don't think it's a good idea that we would want to move forward on it, but we don't think this is actually responsive to necessarily the CBA. So that's why there are examples of that in the reports, which aren't what are included here. So I'm just going to do a quick summary of some of these recommendations and not spend too much time, then we can move to questions. In the first category, on the demand side, one thing that we're excited to potentially look at piloting are slot-based contracts. And this might have, we think it has, could have a great impact on infant and toddler work. So essentially, this would be actually creating service contracts with childcare providers to such a reserve slots. Almost like in the housing world, you might think about project-based section eight vouchers that are embedded at the site. This would be like CCAP vouchers embedded at the site. And it would allow, essentially be reserving those spots for, for CCAP-eligible families. What's also exciting about that, it provides opportunities to kind of layer on other things to that contract, like professional development, coaching, wage issues that we might want to do. So it is a really interesting pilot that we want to potentially look at for next year. We also want to look at capping family co-payments. You might be, I mean, CCAP families actually pay about 15% to 20% of their income in co-payments. There is a lot of national work around indexing that at seven or 10%, and we love to look at making sure that we may, you know, taking our, our co-pay structure and changing it up to actually index down to something around that, that area. Thirdly, we want to make sure we're doing more culturally responsive outreach. There was a lot of good material in both reports around how we can be more focused in certain communities and reaching different communities, how we can be working with different partners on outreach. And that's something that we definitely want to move forward on as we move into 2022. And then lastly, family, friend, and neighbor is a type of care that we feel, you know, is a, is a choice that a lot of families make, especially on the infant and toddler side. There's a lot, childcare resources, who was here earlier presenting, as well as Best Starts for Kids. They do a lot of good work in this area, Best Starts for Kids. We do not do very much work at Deal. We want to look how, how we can be a positive contributor and have a more defined strategy for family, friend, and neighbor care, particularly to, you know, to reach families with, with young children. Moving now to the, the business side, there are things we have highlighted, some areas where we think we can strengthen an incentive model for providers that take infants and toddlers. So there's some good examples, I think, out of New Jersey specifically, that we want to look at in that area. We also, building off what Monica talked about in the previous slide, once we do that, the work of a cost of care, we want to make sure we're adjusting our subsidies to pay the true cost of care. And we know that, you know, family, you know, tuition, it doesn't mean the cost, particularly for infants and toddlers, awfully subsidized by preschool families. And so we want to make sure we're adjusting our subsidies properly for that. So we'll be looking at that as well. On the quality side, we're fortunate to have some sweet beverage tax funds to provide some coaching, professional development in our CCAP classrooms. We want to continue to strengthen that work. And then moving down to systemic alignment, we want to look at issues like changing from federal poverty level to area median income. We think that aligns more with, with what's happening in the housing world and some other things that are happening in the city. It also is more sensitive to the true cost of living in this, in Seattle area. Obviously, we want to align with Best Starts for Kids. And then the last two in this are thinking about more systems groups that we can be putting in together. So obviously, we just got off a previous agenda item of thinking about sort of the built environment. And we think there's rich opportunities for OH, you know, OPCD deal to do more long-range planning. I mean, you heard the challenges of trying to retrofit childcare into spaces that weren't designed for initially. How can we be doing, be more intentional about long-range planning? And then, you know, there's a number of good ideas around how to include business in this work in the reports. And while we haven't sat down with business more formally, we, we think there's probably opportunities to do that. And lastly, on the supply side, you know, we think funds specifically dedicated to infant and toddler spaces is important. Preschool often takes up a lot of funds, especially even, even in these bigger projects. We've talked a lot about pre-development and making that citywide, not just for, for deal providers who are participating in SPP. And then lastly, we're keeping our eye on a really interesting pilot in Minnesota around a public-private subsidy model, which just started, which pools funds from, from private businesses and with, with city funds to create a new subsidy with a third party who then also contracts with a network of providers. I think it has a lot of a lot of strength and, and some interesting components to it. So we want to take a look at that as that pilot continues on and think about whether that would be appropriate for Seattle as we move forward. So with that, I think we can move to any questions that any of the council members have.
Thank you, Cameron. Really appreciate it. I have one question related to the, the work group you identified on the system alignment. So I know that the reports, you know, mentioned and made suggestions related to the built environment. And also, in that context, talked about housing and affordability of housing as, as an additional barrier to childcare. And I'm just wondering if that's, if that's part of what you envision this work group looking at? Or if, or if you're sort of thinking that that's beyond the scope and would be a, a different, a, a different opportunity?
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think we initially, and we haven't gone too far with that. I mean, I think we envisioned it more as how do we do more shared planning around childcare facility development? So that's certainly like a really important issue. I think that's also an issue that can be thought about with our partnership with Best Starts for Kids should their levy renewal pass. I think there's a great opportunity to think about a more regional sort of look and alignment for families that are being displaced and how we can be really making it look like there's, there's one door for them to, to make sure they can get subsidies.
Okay.
Colleagues, any questions or comments on this report, this presentation? Councilmember Skater, please.
Thanks so much. Just two quick questions, and then if we have time, maybe a longer one. Monica, you mentioned expanding the universe to folks in master's programs. Sounds great. Can you remind me, do we already include apprenticeship and trade programs already? And then on page four of the memo that you provided, there was a reference to the universal dollar that the city is expected to potentially receive, we know at the national level, $25 billion for funding for childcare facilities. And a second funding package is considering additional childcare investments. Do we know how much of that money may be coming to the city of Seattle? Any, any firm numbers yet on what that might be in the appropriations process around that?
I don't believe we know that yet. Cam, is that correct?
On that second question, no. And it's just a proposal at this point. So I imagine it's going to change quite a bit.
No. And yes, currently, we do. Trade programs are definitely eligible for CCAP.
Thank you. I thought that was important to remind folks and a reminder for me as well. Council President, if we have a quick second, can I ask a second question here?
Sure, please.
Thank you so much. On page six of the memo, and I think corresponding slide page 13, I really appreciate the detailed process outlined and the principles under which you're reviewing the recommendations. I also see you'll be working closely with the council. Can you tell us a little bit more about, and perhaps Council President, this is in your bailiwick, so I apologize if this is a question for you regarding process. But any, any additional information you have about what the council might be expecting in terms of the implementation of these recommendations that you outlined today, or the broader public engagement process around how folks are going to see these initial recommendations get implemented? Excited about the, the pace and just wanted to check in on the process.
Yeah, and I think, I think maybe on that question, that maybe we can sort of take it in the sort of, because some, some of this is in tranches, right? So some of this is, is outward years. And then, and then, but, but certainly for, for the policy actions related to the summer of 2021, specifically around the CCAP modifications. I would also be interested in knowing if that's something that is within the discretion and the authority of deal without legislation? Or if legislation is going to be, be required to sort of effectuate those proposed modifications to the CCAP program?
We are operating under the assumption that there is no legislation necessary for us to make these policy changes for CCAP. We, that it has, it is under our authority to modify those policies. And, you know, in terms of process, we did go, one of the wonderful things about the, the CBAs is what we conducted a lot of outreach. So we feel very confident that these recommendations are things that will be embraced by, by providers and families.
So that, so in other words, that outreach has already been done and led?
Was already, yeah. So these recommendations are what came forth from the reports, which included outreach with both CCAP providers and childcare providers in Seattle that aren't part of CCAP and, and families as well. So we're, we're happy with, you know, the ability to, to, to move forward on these. And they, they resonated also, you know, with what we believed in, with what our staff sees as well. And gives us the opportunity to see what the impact is of these as soon as we start implementing.
Yeah. Well, I'm excited to see the CCAP modifications in particular and the whole body of work. You know, I've been wanting to expand the eligibility to some of these categories listed here. I mean, I think I've been advocating since at least 2018 to expand the eligibility this way, but I'm, you know, I'm glad that we're finally in a position where we're able to, to do that. And I'm looking forward to, to those policy modifications. Councilmember Skater, did you get, did you get your full questions answered on that longer form one? Just want to make sure you feel?
Yes, thank you so much for double checking.
Okay. Sure, not a problem. Okay, colleagues, any other comments or questions on this report? I know we're running a little long here. Okay, great, great. Brian, anything to, anything to add?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Council President. Just my typical thanks to all of the presenters, Department of Early Education and Early Learning. Thank you so much for all you do. You are amazing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wars as well.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Wars, for being with us today. Appreciate your presence as always.
Thank you so much, Council President, so much. Thank you for being here today. Thank everybody for everything all the time, and particularly Brian. Thank you, Brian. Way to go.
Brian's being thanked for having nothing to add during this presentation. Well, uh, well, thanks, thanks so much, everybody. Really appreciate it and appreciate your patience as we were working through these really dense, dense presentations, but I think this is some good work and look forward to next steps. Director Chappell, anything to add? Any closing remarks?
No, again, we just appreciate this time, the forward thinking, and, and we're, as you know, we're committed to serving all of our students our children and families in Seattle, and, and we look forward to moving, moving this forward.
Awesome. I'm excited. Lots more funding. You know, everything happens when it happens for a reason. So we have a lot more funding at the state level, some funding potentially coming at the county level. We have our FEP levy. We have these reports and recommendations. So I'm feeling good that we have an opportunity to take some real action here. So really, thank you for helping me do this work. I appreciate this. All right, folks, I don't think we have any other items of business on the agenda. So if there's no further business to come before the committee, we'll be adjourned. Hearing no further business, that concludes our meeting for today. Thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.